Good evening. Good evening, we'd like to call this, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order, today is Wednesday, March 8th, 2017, the time is 7 o'clock, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody, we are honored to have you with us this evening. We are gonna go right to Item B on our agenda, which is the presentation of awards and proclamations, and this is such a nice evening, it is Board Appreciation Month recognition, and I believe that's why all of you have joined us here this evening, and again, we thank you. So I think we're gonna start by having Mr. Malardo come forward from John Wallace Middle School. And we need to honor Mr. Malardo, because I think he has officially announced that he will be finally retiring at the end of this year.
Thank you. Thank you, it's been a great run, and I know I'm gonna miss the job immensely. I'm speaking on behalf of my students tonight, they're not able to attend due to the fact that they chose show choir rehearsal over coming to a Board Appreciation Night. But on behalf of the kids, I'd like to speak and support the work that you folks do for our school. As a Newington Public School Administrator for the last 28 years, I've seen firsthand on numerous occasions, the incredible level of commitment and support the Newington Board of Education provides for the children and families of Newington. As a former Newington High School student, who graduated in the class of 1969, I remember attending classes in this very building, and in the annex, which is now a parking lot. Due to the baby boomer population explosion, I attended double sessions in my junior and senior years at Newington High School. All of us watched the construction of the new Newington High School whenever we drove by the site where it currently resides. The Board of Education then, as it does now, responded to the needs of the community in order to do what's right for students. Over the last few years, I've seen the Board of Ed involved in many projects and causes to improve on an already fine product. At Wallace alone, I witnessed the construction of the new grade 5 wing, that includes 10 enclosed classrooms, new science labs, and a new computer lab in 1999. In addition, the movement of world language from a semester-long encore class to a full year core academic class in grade 8. The amazing addition of the John Wallace Middle School Aerospace Academy in 2015, which no other public middle school in the state has. The upgrading of our encore offerings for students by adding a STEM for all class, the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, and the implementation of Google Classroom. In addition, there have been upgrades to our school media center, art room, and interdisciplinary computer lab. You have also been responsible for supporting numerous curriculum writing to ensure that we are providing our students with rigorous learning experiences that are aligned to standards. As my career as an Administrator in Newington comes to a close, I want you all to know how appreciative I am, and have been for the last 29 years, for your support in providing me and my team at Wallace with the resources, manpower, and professional development that enables us to make a difference with our students. We do great work every day, thanks to your support. So on behalf of all the students at John Wallace, I wish to thank all the Board members for your service, I know you have challenging times ahead with the budget, but we appreciate your efforts every day, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I got in trouble once in high school, and I was sent to Mr. Malardo's office, he was my vice principal at the time. I was arguing a tardy that I got because the VA was having a fire, and they told us that even though we were late to school, we were supposed to have listened to the radio and know that we were supposed to come early and use the other entrance. Oh, bring them back up, come on! But Mr. Malardo was wonderful, because he listened, and he still marked me late, but he made me feel a lot better about it. Come on up, join us! Would you like to sit?
Sure. Hello, my name is Danielle. Hello, my name is Danielle, I'm the Vice President of Student Senate. That's Eli Roberts, our president, and James Tebow, the treasurer. While many students spend their time complaining about how school is difficult, boring, or waste of time, they forget how lucky we are to be receiving an education in the first place. Instead of complaining about the hardships of school, students should spend more time thanking people, thanking the people who gave us this opportunity for our quality education. You have supplied us students with Chromebooks in order to receive the best learning experience possible. You have helped fund install the Academy of Aerospace Engineering and the Academy of Biomedical Engineering in our middle schools to help students explore these two different career paths. You provide us with seven wonderful schools and hundreds of excellent teachers. You do an excellent job of preparing us for college and the real world, and for most students, the start of an amazing life. You are the reason that so many people from our small town will go on to lead successful futures. While you may not be recognized for your generosity and wonderful work every day, you deserve all the thanks you can get, and I think I speak for all of Newington when I say this, thank you so very much for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come this evening and rush over here, we really appreciate it. Next, I believe we have some students along with Mr. Smith from Anna Reynolds.
Good evening, my name is Hassan Munawar, and I am here tonight with Kaylee Wilson and Katherine Simone. We are fourth graders at Anna Reynolds Elementary School. On behalf of the students at Anna Reynolds, we would like to thank you for everything that you do for the children in Newington.
Beautiful. Thank you, very impressive. Next up, we have some students presenting along with Mrs. Lawrence, the principal of Ruth Elchafee.
Good evening, everyone. I always turn it over to the students, as you know, but I just want to extend my thank you, as I do know that this is a, probably a very grueling job, sometimes you volunteer your time to do this, and we know sometimes that you take the heat for a lot of things that you have no control over, and so we just thank you for all of your time and your efforts that you give towards Newington, to the staff, to our students, thank you.
Good evening. Here, we have Cameron Gatos, and she is the president of our Student Council at Ruth Elchafee. And there's also Madeline Mashad, which is the secretary at Ruth Elchafee School. And there's also Avery Bonet, Vice President of the Ruth Elchafee Student Council. And my neighbor, Samantha Yvonne, Treasurer of the Ruth Elchafee Student Council.
To show our appreciation for all that you do, we are excited to share our ceramic coffee mugs or tea, because everybody likes coffee, depending on what you like, depending on what you like, created by some of our fourth graders. This is just a small token of our appreciation that you can treasure forever.
They are painted with beautiful colors and a heart to symbolize how much we appreciate your hard work and dedication toward our students of Newington. There is also something sweet in each mug for all of you.
We want to give a special thank you to our art teachers, Mrs. Gaeta and Ms. Multer, and all the fourth grade students for their creativity, we hope you enjoy.
Thank you. Next, we have some students here from Elizabeth Green with Mr. Marciano, the principal.
Good evening, Board of Education members and district administrators, as you, I'm Jim Marciano, the principal of Elizabeth Green. I would also like to extend a thank you to you on behalf of my staff and the students and the families at Elizabeth Green. We recognize, we also recognize the tough job you have, thinking about balancing innovation and economics, it's a hard thing to do, I think you do it very well, and we appreciate your efforts. And now I'm gonna turn it over to the students, so that they can extend that thank you a little bit more. Before I do that, I do want to acknowledge Mrs. Gaeta, she's standing in the back over there, hi Mrs. Gaeta, she is the, yes. She always comes up with the most creative inspirational projects, and then helps the students bring them to life, so I hope you enjoy what our students have created for you this evening. Oh, and one more thing, I have one speaker, and I have three very, very dedicated and talented passer outers, so they're gonna pass out the art while Julian, our Vice President from Student Council, shares some words with you.
Good evening, Board of Education members, administrators, principals, teachers, and parents. My name is Julian Bies, and I am the Vice President on our Student Council at Elizabeth Green Elementary School. I would also like to introduce Zara Ken, Maya Simpson, and Zoe Hillman, who will help me represent Elizabeth Green School tonight. We at Elizabeth Green Elementary School would like to thank you for your service and everything you have done for the students at Elizabeth Green School and all the other schools in Newington. We made you picture frames, we chose a word that was very important to us, and use our artistic vision to show you what the word looked like to us. These words are very important, because they are words we all need to live by. We hope you enjoy our gift, and thank you once again.
Thank you, great job. Such impressive speakers, unbelievable, the poise, we could have used them, Monday night. Thank you very much. And next, we have students who are here from John Patterson with Mr. Gatos, the principal.
Good evening, everyone, on behalf of the Patterson community, we too would like to thank you for all that you do, you devote an amazing amount of time, effort, and energy, not only for our students and for our community, it's a lot of your own personal time and a lot of time away from your family, so we are very grateful for what you do. Also, a thank you to our staff at Patterson, Mrs. Obert-Hahn is here tonight, Mrs. McDonald is here tonight, as our Student Council advisors, and a thank you to Ms. Multer, who helped us with our projects. And a huge thank you to all the families that are here, I can certainly understand and appreciate the sprint from getting out of school to activities to dinner, and then to here, so thank you for bringing the students here tonight. Now I'll turn it over to our officers.
Good evening, my name is Olivia Graditz, and I am the Student Council President at John Patterson. Joining me this evening are the other Student Council Officers. On behalf of all the students at John Patterson, we would like to say thank you for all that you do for our school and community.
Hello, my name is Gillian Bouchard, and I'm the Student Council Vice President at John Patterson. We know that you have a difficult job, and we appreciate all that you do to make the Newington Public Schools and John Patterson great.
Hello, my name is Ava Do Santos, and I'm the Student Council Treasurer at John Patterson. I know it goes without saying that your job is a very important one for all the children in Newington, but it is nice that we can take the time to say thank you in person.
Hello, my name is Tamiya Barnes, and I am the Student Council Secretary at John Patterson. To show our appreciation for all that you do, we are pleased to present you with ceramic ladybug plant holders. These were made with love by the students at John Patterson School, they are painted in the yellow and blue colors that represent our school system. The students who made your plant holders signed it on the bottom for you. We wanted to give a special thanks to our art teacher, Ms. Multer, and her students for their creative work. Enjoy our gift to you, and thank you again for all you do for the students in Newington.
Thank you, great job, great job. And next, we have students from Martin Kellogg along with Mrs. Ciano.
Hi, my name is Natalia Abdu, and I'm the President of Martin Kellogg, and this is Christina Lu, who is the Vice President. We are here to think, we are here to represent the Kellogg family, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you Board of Education members for all that you do to make our education great. Your support of all the students is greatly appreciated.
Hi, I'm Christina, and I'm the Vice President of Student Council at Martin Kellogg, and I would like to thank you guys for approving the biomedical academy that I am actually in, and I'm so glad that I was offered this opportunity made possible by you guys, and it showed me a lot of new careers, and I really like it. And we would like to present you these mugs that we specially made and personalized for you guys as a thank you.
Thank you. Who are you looking for? Thank you very much. Natalia is my neighbor, and they're good friends of ours, and I've known her since she was a baby, and I can't believe here she is the president of the middle school, it's just, it's amazing, amazing. Okay, and next, last but not least, we have students with Mr. Wanker from Newington High School. Oh, we have our board representatives.
On behalf of Student Council President Emily Carl, I'll be reading the following thank you to the Board of Ed. When the students of Newington Public Schools walk through the halls of their buildings, they probably don't think about the tremendous work that the Board of Education does on their behalf. Behind the scenes, the Board of Ed works tirelessly on the budget, new initiatives, and policies. Most students don't even realize that the Board of Ed's purpose is to give them a better education and experience. However, this doesn't mean that the hours of service, dedication, stress, sacrifice aren't appreciated. We would like to thank you all for all of your selfless voluntary service to benefit all the children of Newington Public Schools. Please enjoy the cutting boards, cups, and most importantly, cookies and pie, which are in the fridge in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Would we like some Board member comment before everybody exits the room, I'm sure?
Hello, everyone, I just wanna say thank you so much, this is by far, no question around, the best night of the whole year, and it means so much to all of us, it's so overwhelming, and just so touching, and thank you, thank you, thank you, the handmade stuff, and all the heartfelt appreciation that went into it, we appreciate it so much, thank you, thank you, thank you, I can't say thank you more enough, so thank you so much.
Mr. Schulman.
Thank you for coming out, there's some really impressive public speaking that we heard tonight, so I hope that you all continue to do that, and never be afraid to speak your mind and speak out, even when it's to adults that you don't know in a strange room. I will also say, on the same line, there was one really impressive speaker who spoke even better than her dad tonight, so congrats Cam, and we'll see you around the corner.
Once again, I'm overwhelmed, I remember last year how much you all brought me to tears, but I need to let you all know, the fact that you're even here this evening is reward enough for me. You make this effort that we do on your behalf worth every moment, and every effort that you make to better your lives will make us that much more happier. I have to reiterate what Josh said, I'm overwhelmed with the public speaking abilities and your presentation skills, and I truly love the theme of the evening of coffee mugs, it fits well, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I would like to say that I'm really impressed and proud of all of you for coming up and speaking, because I know that it can be intimidating when you have to, like, was already said, you are in a different room with people that you don't know, and we're asking you to speak into a microphone, so I applaud all of you for a job very well done, and thank you for all of this, this is so awesome, I love it, and I, you know, I actually got to go in and read at John Patterson last week, and that, I thought that was the, that was like the greatest thing, just being able to see you guys in action, we're here all the time looking at papers and talking to adults, and when we get to get into the schools and see what you're doing there, it's very exciting, and so I, thank you for letting me come in to do that, I loved that, and this is wonderful too, so thank you.
I'd also like to thank everybody for the wonderful gifts, it's an exciting evening for all of us, and well appreciated on my part, and I'm sure everybody else at the table here, thank you very much.
Thank you as well, your presentation skills are wonderful, don't stop presenting in front of groups, that is a skill you'll need forever, and I want you to know that all of this stuff sits with me, nine years, are we named, 10 years worth of gifts are with me at the School of Business at Central, every day I look at the mugs and the plaques that you've given me over the years, and it warms my heart through the day, and makes every bad day or great day even better, so thank you very much.
Coming close to the end means everybody said everything pretty much that I could try to say to you, other than it is what makes us come here to these Board meetings, is the fact that you folks are out there, and as Ms. Gaius said, I read to a classroom last Wednesday, and I'm reading again next Wednesday, and being out with you folks, and actually having contact with you makes this job why we come in and do what we do, so thank you all. Administrators, thank you also, you're doing a great job with these kids, and keeping us, keeping us where we need to be too, so thank you again.
We're gonna go back to Mr. Schulman.
I just forgot, I forgot one thing, all the students that presented, this is a fantastic time to turn to your parents and ask for ice cream.
I think, how many of our, how many of our people in the audience have homework to do? How many of our people in the audience have homework to do? Anybody have homework? Because you're not leaving until you say yes. There you go, okay.
Well, again, I'm sure, I think what Dr. Collins is hinting at is you don't need to stay for the boring stuff, we thank you very much for coming, and I just wanna say I am so proud to be a part of this Board, and so proud of all of you, and you are the reason why we are here, and you are the reason why we continue to sit around this table. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you, good reach out. Oh, wow. So neat. Jean, I love the colors of your frame. Look at, you know what's so funny, your stuff matches, you got like the blues and the turquoise, then look at, I got like, I know, isn't that so funny?
Do you still think our main focus is on STEM?
Yeah, exactly, we're very, yes. Oh, I know, thank you. Oh, what a great idea! Did you see, like, one of the kids turned around and goes? Alright, so, I know. Oh, don't forget, what'd they say? There's pies? Pies and cookies? There's ten pies and ten cookies? We'll divide them up. Thank you. Alright, so we, we just finished item B on our agenda. We're gonna go right to item C, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. And seeing that we cleared the room completely. If anybody would like to call in, our phone number is 860-665-8736. Seeing nobody left in the audience and nobody calling in at this time, we will move to item D on the agenda, which is, oh, I thought it was ringing. I thought you moved. Okay. Standing Committee Information Items. And we're gonna go all the way down to six, which is student representatives, because we haven't had any committee meetings since our last board meeting to report on. Come on back up to the table. Yeah, it's gonna be Carville. Welcome back. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. To start the report off, we will begin with the latest sports news. In late February, ice hockey tied 1-1 against Husatonic and made it to the CIC State Tournament. Cheerleading also are in first place and New England Cheerleaders Association Champions. Most recently, boy swimming came in fourth place at conference. Many members had best times and Max Ugrak qualified for the 200IM at the state trials this Saturday. As you can see, I had a little slightly different haircut. That was for conference. In other news, members of Newington High School Student Council recently visited John Patterson last week on Thursday in participation of Read Across America. Myself, Lucas, and other Student Council members read What Pet Should I Get by Dr. Seuss to kindergarten and fourth graders. After, we helped the kindergarteners make their own pets using crafts and assisted fourth graders in making posters for adoption at the Humane Society. It was truly enjoyable to see the smiles on the children's faces as we read to them. I can speak for myself when I say there's nothing in the world that compares to seeing the joy and happiness on a child's face. The fact that we're able to do this while advocating reading shows just how much potential there is in Newington. I will now turn over the rest of the report over to Lucas.
Thank you, Ripple. While I was sitting over at that table, I was, I was in deliberation. I was thinking about what I was gonna say when I came up here to thank you guys, because I know Ripple got to have a nice little spiel on there, even though it wasn't written by him. I really, I really feel like, I really feel like I had to, just to say something and I couldn't think of anything while I was up there, so I kinda wanted to just go with it and see where it takes me. Okay, so I'm a junior at the high school. I take three AP classes and I take the rest of our honors. And I have had the ability to challenge myself time after time at the high school and I can't thank you guys enough for that. I really can't. Because there's so, it's, it's so, it's so inexplicably amazing to not only challenge yourself, but then to succeed in challenging yourself via the resources given to you. And I know that you guys are instrumental in providing those resources and providing the most quality staff and the most quality teachers. I honestly have no complaints. I am absolutely amazed with the service done by this board and even though at times it's, it's not easy and sometimes, and I know you've been told this all night, but it's, it's not, not always the hard times that count. It's what you guys do every single day that matters the most. And I, I think a nice woman once said, "I believe the children are our future, so let's teach them well and let them lead the way." And I think that you guys believe that.
Whitney Houston, nice and impressive!
And I, I think, I think you guys really do wholeheartedly believe that and I believe that too. And I'm glad to see such try, such trying here at this Board of Education. I'm amazed. So, congrats to you guys, very, very much so. And then to continue where I left off. Blew Emily out of the water.
Don't forget, he's been, he's been writing that for six months.
I didn't tell you. But no, I just, let's get back on track and talk about Student Council, because very important stuff going on here. We're gearing up for our annual Spring Fest and so currently Spring Fest is scheduled for April 1st, not a joke, it really is, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the high school cafeteria and the surrounding classrooms. And it's, we're offering it to students, not students, but like children in the town ages two to 10. And a count will follow the day's activities in the gymnasium at 1 p.m. The first 100 children registered will gain admittance into the hunt. It's usually huge and crazy, so much fun. And at the door, we suggest a $10 to $15 donation and every single dollar that we get from the community will go to Newington Relay for Life in June, which Newington High School will have a team going to. So far, the Student Council's got confirmation of the clubs that want to participate in Spring Fest and we've made over 3,000 flyers for disbursement all around the town and ordered thousands of eggshells. They are stacked in the Student Council office. And now we just have to stuff every single one of them. Coordinate activities and do an immense amount of setup, but we have a pretty decent start, I like to think. Newington High School DECA members are getting ready for our annual ICDC competition at the AquaTurf. We have roughly 30 members competing, which is more than any of the year before. Students are competing in either group or individual events and I personally am competing with other Student Council members, Allison Madrazzo and Austin Sargent, in the community service event. So, in preparation for this event, we had to find a deserving charity and find, and design a series of ways to help them through our DECA chapter. And so through our advisor, Mrs. Ally Miller, we connected with a woman that lives in Meriden who runs, or is part of a nonprofit called Go Haiti, located in central Haiti, which houses about 37 children and provides medical aid to their community. And as a chapter, we successfully raised over $1,000 trying to get around each of the different, I don't know how to say this, but like regulations within the school. We weren't allowed to solicit beyond our DECA chapter. We provided gifts for each of the children. We gave them clothing items so that they could have adequate church wear and we had each of our members write a letter to a child and had it translated by our French beyond our students. And then after that came the fun part, the 30-page paper that we had to write in preparation for competition. And so on Monday, Allison, Austin, and I will present our project to a panel of judges who will decide if our project is worthy of placing in the top three around the state. And regardless of whether we place or not, the real accomplishment has already been surpassed and other members are also excited to see where their skills get them. This year in Newington so far has been rocking and we are going well into the third quarter and students are productive as ever and the town is full of life. Now, do you guys have any questions?
Okay, comments. As a board member and as a parent, I love hearing the positive comments about your experience at Newington High. That's wonderful. The Spring Fest, my kids have outgrown it, but they've loved that. So, the whole town should go and support that. It's a lot of fun. The kids love that. Business Academy breakfast is coming up too. The Read Across America Day at Patterson, I don't recall hearing before that high schoolers went down to read. Is this the first year? Because that's phenomenal.
No, we were there last year.
Oh, I don't even remember hearing. That is so awesome. I love that.
So much fun.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
They really enjoy like having you there.
Yeah, they, they love high schoolers. They'd rather have you than like someone our age, you know? So, that's good. Thank you.
Any other board member? Mrs. Dr. Braverman?
DECA is Monday, the 13th?
Monday, the 13th.
Yeah, that'll be, it's a one, have you been before?
Yes, I went last year.
Okay. It's a wonderful event. Anyone who can make it, they always need more judges, but it's a great day. And I'm always impressed, because I've judged for a lot of, a lot of years, with the preparation and your presentation skills and your ability to think quick on your feet. You only have 15 minutes to get a scenario of what kind of event you're, what kind of company you are and what you're gonna sell and how you're gonna sell it. It's, it's a really, a really good thing. So, great job.
DECA's a pretty amazing club. I think my daughter's going to Boston this weekend with DECA.
Yeah.
Yeah, a field trip. Yeah. I'm sorry?
Who's your daughter?
Uh, Emmy Petronio.
Yeah, yeah. I think she's going up there. I know Austin's going up there too.
Yes.
Which is so happenly. It's amazing because in competition, we need to practice together. He's gone.
So, my, just so you know, my, the record you have to beat, my final year in the classroom, I had 23 state winners who qualified for nationals. 23 is the number you gotta beat.
DECA just came back.
Challenge is on. And I think in your sports updates, and correct me if I'm wrong, hopefully I have this right, basketball, aren't they, didn't they make it to the second round of states and they're playing tomorrow?
Windsor, was it?
No.
No, Windsor. I'm sorry. I can't think of the name.
Yes, yes. I think Mr. Sylvia is correct. And I think they're playing, who are they, who are they playing tomorrow? Forget. Yes, yes. I think they're going down. Yeah. Anyway, I know they're playing tomorrow, right, in the second round of states, I believe. So, yes, very impressive. Impressive seasons. Thank you very much. Any other board member? Yeah, good luck. Good luck and thank you so much for your great updates. Okay, we are gonna move to item E, Other Business Information Items, and we have a report on our enrollment projections. And I'm assuming this is gonna be Mr. Farisi.
Can everyone hear? Okay, good. So, if you turn to item E1, it's the enrollment projections and we shared some similar information with you going through the budget process. But annually, we provide the Board of Education with a more thorough report. The report is a combination of two things. It's a combination of what the New England School Development Council, or NESDEC, provides to us. And they're a company that does project out in the, in the New England area of estimated enrollment as well as what we see from information coming into us. Right now, this week, for example, is kindergarten registration. So, as information continues to come in, we take the NESDEC projections as well as the, the real numbers and we keep watching those along the way. That continues through the summertime, all the way up until school starts. And so with that, I'll share a little bit about the report itself. The enrollment projections are merely estimates. There are a lot of variables involved with them, whether students are staying within town, moving in or out of town, new developments coming in and such. So, it's based on the number of births, factors such as housing expansions and family relocations. The NESDEC projections, they do not include in their calculations some of the following variables, and this would be in the middle section of page one. Newer future construction projects that are not yet permitted. Special education students who remain in 12th grade until the age of 21, so are transition academy students, for example. Additional open choice seats declared to meet the funding needs. So, this year we will be declaring more than, than last year. Those are not included. I'll show you how I do include those in, in a report that I add to the NESDEC report. The number of students who are anticipated to return for a fifth year in high school and the number of students who return from magnet schools during the school year. So, but that is why we do provide the Board of Education with monthly enrollment updates, so you can see a lot of those factors throughout the year as they keep evolving. While overall, the NESDEC enrollment projections indicate a decrease in enrollment of approximately 39 students from 4,052 to 4,013, the following additional factors must also be considered, like I just shared a little bit above, that we will be declaring an additional 18. And actually, as of yesterday, we spoke about possibly 20 open choice seats. We anticipate seven students will complete a fifth year at Newington High School and there will be approximately 18 students enrolled in the transition academy. So, when we take all of those factors and put them together, we really are only looking at a differential of around 14. Those estimates, again, continuously change. When I had written this report, I received word, I believe, that the transition academy might be looking at possibly 20 students. So, those factors, you know, continue to evolve as, as the days evolve. So, as you continue to go through report, I, I won't go through each section by section. You have the historical enrollments by grade, so you can just see a summary of what, what's been going on historically. The projections by grade and by school. So, if you turn a little bit further into the packet that shows the Newington historical enrollment, the actual NESDEC projection, it looks like this. On the third page in, you'll start to see some of the projections by grade and overall toward the end. So, that first table chart shows, if you look at the fourth column in, you'll see the school year. So, the first school year you'll notice is this school year. And in kindergarten, we have, for example, in the kindergarten column, 266 students. As you go down to the 2017-18 school year, just one below it, projected to go down a little bit to 250. Now, again, those are estimates at this point. We continuously watch as kindergarten registration comes in, as well as what happens throughout this, this rest of the school year into the summertime. So, in that table, I would highlight a couple of areas. Kindergarten, third grade, fourth grade, eighth grade, and 12th grade have some lower enrollment numbers. Where grades two, five, and 11 have higher enrollment numbers. And so you see how sometimes the offset brings us to where we get to the 39 student differential in the original report, but then when we start to factor in some of the other elements, we're really at about a, anywhere from a 12 to 15 student differential at this point. So, that's what we're estimating and projecting for right now. What are the implications of that in regards to staffing? Those 15 students redistributed across K to 12, pre-K to 12, I should say, don't really have a significant impact on the staffing. It isn't as if it's located in one, you know, central place where, where it might. It is throughout. So, we are currently requesting the same staff for next year, except for the addition that the board put in. Guess I would stop for a moment and ask if there are any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Farisi? Yes, Dr. Braverman?
I had called Dr. Collins earlier today because I didn't read, when my own kids were here, which was 20 years ago or more, I didn't know how many, what our enrollment was at that point. So, he's, we're even fairly much from that point to now.
And then I think even 10 years out, we're predicting only like a one student difference, right?
Right.
So, we really in, in Newington have always, it's, we've kinda stayed, yes.
It's somewhat misleading when you look at the, when you look at the NESDEC report because it, it appears that we're on a downward trend. They don't add in the magnet school kids, who you're still responsible for. So, if you add those kids in, we're figuring about 300 other kids, about 300.
We do and to, 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 or show the example that Dr. Collins is speaking to, if you turn to the very last page. What I have here in the, the top, in the middle rows are pre-K through 12th grade, but then you'll see in the middle row, the second to last column, the other column, which then elevates our numbers to even almost approximately 371 students more. And then if you look at the very bottom table, that very bottom table shows where those students are coming from and/or are within our district that may or may not be here, but we have to account for them because they are students that the Board of Education is responsible for, but not necessarily calculated by NESDEC in the projections that they put together for us. So, we have to keep track of these students so that way we can ensure that their needs are being met, whether they are with us right now or return to us, or are students that are staying with us, for example, with the transition academy and such, so.
Any further questions?
Demographically, there's still the 1% decline in new births, yes, every year. I think was, has been for 10 years and will be for another 10. So, if we're holding our own, kudos to us because other towns are not and they're closing schools. So, we're doing good work.
So, so, yeah, and I agree. And I did contact NESDEC just to ask them a little bit more about that because we get the report that you see here and sometimes I like to understand the, how they, how they come to these numbers a little more deeply. And they did share that our housing market has, has been somewhat prosperous and, and that we are getting increases in student, or in, in, you know, the sale of homes and that's impacting us at the elementary and middle level right now in a positive way and that will keep going up to the high school. If that trend continues, then that would kinda offset that 1% birth rate.
So, it's interesting. Couple of days ago, we were scheduled to have one fewer student next year. Looks like we had two more.
Right.
Right.
So, things changed just in a week or two.
Correct. So, this, this report is ever-evolving. Every, you know, week we look at it. So this, this report is ever-evolving, every, you know, week we look at it, next week will be even more interesting to see how the kindergarten registration went. Although sometimes the challenge with that is if our folks don't come out for the week-long registration, then we are kinda enrolling students from now all the way to the start of the school year. Although we encourage strongly everyone come out as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, we had a nice short agenda this evening. We are on item F, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibility. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. So not that short, sorry, all right, sorry Lou.
I'll keep it short, we're doing good. Next meeting, you'll be asked to take an action item, which is either to roll forward any credit balance that's attributable to the fund operations for the year until next year, or use some of the funds this year for special initiatives. Because of the position we're in with having a $1,284,000 health benefits credit rolling from last year to this year, there's no need to even consider taking anything this year, so.
And this is usually what we do anyway, we've always pushed it off.
Our typical practice.
This is, right, we're following our typical practice.
Right now, we're on a trend of being $523,000 ahead after seven months of plan operations. There are no catastrophic claims or anything of that nature that will negatively impact the trend as of right now. And, you know, it's highly likely this number will hold up until the end of the year. Not sure how much more it'll grow, but it's very good chance it'll be at this point by the end of the year. So, yeah, that will be, you know, that's why I anticipate the recommendation will be. The next meeting, we will have eight months, actual four months of estimated, so, you know, the closer you get to the finish line, the more accurate projections.
Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you Lou, I was just curious, you probably told me this before, but I've forgotten. It's great to hear that we haven't had any catastrophic claims or anything of that nature, and that we've got this nice positive result at this moment. Do we have a backstop in place in case we do?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Right, the plan has two backstops, actually. There is a individual stop loss, which is $175,000 per individual in the plan, whether it's spouse, employee, or dependent. And then beyond that, there's a 25% aggregate stop loss quarter, so once our claims hit 125% of the target, then everything is paid for by the plan, we have no more responsibility for it. And that's part of the fee structure that we pay every year into the administration of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Lou? Okay, all right, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, I think now we are on item, I don't have, oh, is that the one that was added? I'm, I'm using an old agenda, I apologize, that's why. Okay, sorry, we are on discussion, item three, a discussion, the feasibility study. You don't have to go quick, sorry, I, I just.
No, no, I will, there's really not much to it. As I think I've shared with you, we, I'm really interested in finding out an accurate number with regard to Anna Reynolds, because at some point, there's going to be interest in moving that project forward, and, and I would like at the time to have a somewhat accurate number. So one of the ways, since we cannot put a building committee together, the board is not permitted to do that without council authorization, what you can do is you commission a feasibility study for the, the district. Might as well, if you're doing one school, you might as well figure out, do a study of the whole district and see what your needs are, and then you can then present to the council a, some more reasonable plan of action for what you want to move forward with. This town happens to have many more schools than we do, but, so yours won't look like this, but I mean, this is, I didn't want to print one of these, but you all have it electronically. And it'll tell you, you know, what the school needs are, what needs to be done to each one, and then, then we will have an idea of what needs to be done at Anna Reynolds, because I'm really interested to find out, can we renovate it as is, is it gonna be a simple fix, or is there gonna be something that's more involved in it? I would like to know that sooner than later. Because at some point, once this project gets off the ground, and they are going to be interested in finding out, I don't want to scramble to get that, get that done. So I would just ask the board to review it, and you don't have to make any decisions tonight.
You don't have to make any decisions tonight. How about the cost of this feasibility study?
Right, the cost, what we, what we would do is we would put out an RFP, and we would find out, we would get bids or estimates on what it would cost to do the study, and then you'd make a decision whether you want to do it or not.
Okay, so you would come to us with bids and estimates for what the study is going to cost?
We, yeah, we would be required to do that.
Okay.
Still have to follow town policy.
Okay. Mr. Schulman.
Do you have a ballpark idea of what feasibility studies cost?
Nope. I believe this one cost $9,000. This was for many schools. It depends on what you want them to do. And is there, it's gonna be cheaper if you do all of the schools than if you just do one at a time.
Okay.
If it's too much, you don't move, don't move forward.
Other questions, Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you, Dr. Collins. One, I love feasibility studies, because of my background as an architect and engineer, and I think it'll give a great picture, the cost sounds reasonable to me.
I don't know, honestly, I don't know.
But I, I understand, and we'll get an RFP, and we'll have that come before us before. But what I've always experienced is a trouble, is coming up with a list of needs. So I know I've witnessed it in the four years that I've watched the town hall building renovation go from one gymnasium, two gymnasiums, you know, and, and then, oh, I need more meeting rooms, and I need this, and I need that, and that generally causes a level of chaos when the needs, right. So that, that's my biggest concern that I have with the feasibility study. You know, it's one thing to come in and say, okay, given the existing environment, what do we need to do to maintain it? And keep its status quo, and then have an, an excellent discussion and deliberation over what our needs would be relative to it, so. We already have the needs, so, so we, we are not looking to do anything different with that school. We're looking at making it handicap accessible, or making sure that, you know, so those are the types, so we're not looking at doing anything fancy or anything else. So we've got a need, the needs is already done. No, and I, I do thank you, since I didn't have much to do over the last month, I had an opportunity to read that entire study. It's a very nicely detailed study, identifying all of the schools in the district, of that particular district, and I love the itemization that they came back with of where they recommended any types of activities or improvements to address the district. So from that end of it, I'm, I'm very comfortable of getting that type of detail and that type of information in front of the members, so that, and in front of the, the team, so that y'all can make constructive recommendations in the future. And I also think it would help prepare us and give us a great leap once the building committee is formally approved by the town council. I just don't like to, to guess, or do anything last minute, or rush into anything, you know, I'd rather have it kinda settled before, so at least you can hand them something that has been thought out and done intentionally.
Dr. Braverman.
Dr. Collins, are there architectural or engineering firms that specialize in school renovations, school buildings?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we won't have trouble having people reply to our RFP.
Good question, any other questions? Okay. All right, now, maybe, I think we are ready for item F, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phone number again is 860-665-8736. We'll give it a minute. All right, seeing nobody calling in this evening, and no members of the public in our audience right now, we will go to item G on our agenda, which is remarks by board members, and we could, where did we start before? We, all right, so we'll start with Paul.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Dr. Braverman.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Maraca. I gave her a call last weekend, one of our students, Silvana Gonzalez, came into my office, she was running for Miss New Britain. They had just told, she just applied, like, on Wednesday, Thursday, we called Pam on Thursday, Friday. She didn't know, she, she wanted to talk about being a teacher in her, in her remarks for Miss, she's hoping to be Miss Connecticut. So Pam was wonderful, she gave her all kinds of details, websites to go to, and she won. So she's Miss New Britain, so it worked out very much, she was so excited, so I told her I would thank you personally.
Yeah, that was good.
Oh, wow. I, yeah, Erin Brady was Miss USA, so, wow.
Very neat.
Finance majors, yeah.
Nice, okay, Bob?
Before you pack up all your goods tonight, and wonderful gifts from the schools and the students, don't forget to get your pies out of the refrigerator, I was, I was given those instructions that remind you. And the, just the, the kids speaking here tonight, it was unbelievable how mature they are for their age. And it was really, really impressive, and I'd like to thank them for all the gifts again, thank you.
They were really mature, they, and some of them, like you Nancy, I have known since they were babies, and it's amazing to see them so grown up and articulate. So yeah, thank you again to all of them for coming out and for these lovely gifts. I also want to say thank you to two classes at John Patterson, Mrs. Obert-Hahn and Mrs. Lucas. I got to read to both of those classes, and they were great, great listeners, they were a lot of fun. I received some thank you notes from Mrs. Obert-Hahn's class, and I enjoyed reading them so much, I read them with my daughter, and I actually brought them tonight, because I love them so much, and they were really, it was just such a pleasure to be able to read those in the afternoon the other day, totally brightened my day, so thank you to those students for their thank yous. That's all, I'm looking forward to reading at E-Green next week, so more good stuff.
First, I'd like to say thank you to all of you. I can't tell you how much it meant to me to receive the well wishes and the, and the get well cards. I was utterly amazed, like, when I saw the, the envelope from Cindy, I was like going, oh, this is nice, thank you Cindy, I could see it coming. But when I saw all the signatures and the thoughts, it really did brighten my day, and I do thank you very much. It was very uplifting. But I also wanted to let y'all know that I have a, a deep thanks to the anonymous students that sent me flowers at the hospital. I don't know who it was, but I know it was from somebody in the school district that had heard that I was having the event that I had. And that was very uplifting, in fact, I had the honor of splitting the arrangement with all of the nurses. I mean, what am I really gonna do with it when I left the hospital, but they really enjoyed it, so that was very, very well received. I have to tell you that I was bored to death while I was out, I missed the interaction with all of you, and I'm very happy to be back. I also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Millardo. During my entire tenure here, living in Newington, I've had the opportunity of interacting with him, and he has fondly taken care of my family. I can say that my boys had somewhat of the same experiences you had Nancy, but I can also say that Dr. Collins and Mr. Millardo have helped us through those issues, and that was deeply appreciated. I'm sad, I'm happy for them, but then I'm also sad, because I understand what others' children will have. And the last was, is the students. Again, this is the second time that I got to experience this, and yet I am fully amazed and deeply, deeply humbled when I witness what our kids are doing, and what they can do, and how they presented themselves. It makes all of this worthwhile, thank you again.
Cindy?
I got to take some time out of my workday and go to John Patterson last Tuesday to read to Mrs. Olson's first graders for the fifth straight year. The first year I was on the board, I just couldn't get my schedule right to read to her class, but and it is the highlight of my year, every year, I love the Lorax, and I get to read every year to the first graders, who, it really blows me away, and every year I tell the same story, because the, the class repeats, the kids change, but the teaching techniques improve every year, and I watch these kids get a leading question asked to them by Mrs. Olson after I finish reading. They turn to their learning partners and quietly discuss for five minutes or so while we catch up, because we've known each other since I was five, her daughter and I went to school K to 12 together, and we catch up, and then she circles them up, and she leads the discussion by asking someone to repeat the leading question. They repeat it, and then they call on someone to give the first remarks. Then they call on each other, and they'll go, you know, Paul, can I add on to what you just said? And then they'll say, Sharon, I liked what you just said, but I also wanted to say that I think this was the point, and they bring up such, I mean, it, it's a Socratic seminar led by the students who are in first grade at a level that is akin to probably what we were doing in middle school when I was in school. And, and it's incredibly impressive, and Pat is a phenomenal teacher, and her face is on the board of Teachers of the Year, but I mean, that's the kinda dedication we have, even from veteran staff, to change techniques and, and do things a different way, and let their kids do the leading, and ask those kinds of deep questions that lead to discussion. And, and makes me so proud to be a member of the board, and make it easier to spend so much time at these meetings and doing things that are a little more mundane, so the kids grow in that way, and it's really incredible to observe. And today I had another one of those opportunities, I was invited to Martin Kellogg's Drama Club to help on the musical, and I think my comments last meeting maybe reminded someone about that. But I'm, but honestly, Nicole did ask me, like, back in October to come, and so we got connected. So I, so I took a couple hours off work today to go, and thankfully, my bosses won't really notice, but I'm gonna be out of work for a few more hours over the next week and a half or so to work with some of the kids, and the talent, the passion, and the dedication of our staff and students is just, I mean, we have teachers from Patterson coming over to Kellogg to do costuming after their school day is done, and then taking stuff home. I mean, it's, it's really remarkable what our staff and our kids can do, and I'm just happy to be part of it, so that's my, that's, that's my four cents to that.
More like 20? Yeah, we, we have an amazing district, our students are so impressive, and they're getting more and more impressive, which each, with each year, it's like they keep, you know, raising the bar. So this was a great night, I, I hope it helps to rejuvenate all of us, we have some tough times ahead, so I hope we're energized now, and we can get into that more difficult work that's staring at us right now, so. I appreciated this night.
Very well said by everybody, so thank you, yes, I, I agree. You know, it was a, we did a lot of preparation for our presentation that we made on Monday, and we still are in the middle of the budget season, so this was a very welcome evening, it kinda was a nice distraction. Again, it's, you know, why we are, why we are here. You just reminded me, you know, this, this school district and these teachers that go above and beyond. The other day, I came home from work, and, you know, dropping one at hockey, one at soccer, and I wanted to see CD, and then Joey's like, Mom, I have to go back to school, and I said, well, no you don't, it's, it's 7 o'clock at night. He said, no, remember Mr. Holmes is leading an astronomy lesson tonight, and we're gonna go back, and so I dropped him off, and then I picked him back up, and he had pictures on his phone of Venus, and then he told me he has to go in the morning to get a picture of Jupiter. I mean, it, it just, it's, it's amazing, and, and our dedicated teachers, you know, were there, asking me if I'd like to stay and learn, and I felt bad I didn't stay, but no, it, it is amazing, it's amazing what's being done. My nine-year-old came home today, and he was doing a packet of homework, and he was struggling, and he was doing his math, and he was sitting there, and I was finishing up dinner, and then he said to me, you know, I really like math, Mom, I really, really like it, I think I love it. I'm like, does somebody pay you, is somebody watching here, I'm like, this is weird. But it is, it's amazing, it's amazing to have children and to watch them go through this system, and I'm, I'm very proud to be a part of this system, so. With that, I think Dr. Collins would like to make a comment, and then we'll wrap up.
Thank you, I just want to ask your, your help on something. I was asked to, to write for, on behalf of Connecticut for a national publication, and on innovative schools. And as I kinda thought about it, everybody would probably expect me to say Chromebooks or something like that, but none of that really has anything to do with what we're doing here. And, and, but what really does, what it really comes down to is our level of expectation. And I've heard everybody say- And I've heard everybody say tonight how, how surprised they are, how, how, how encouraged they are about what the kids are learning, and, and I just see it a little bit differently, and I just ask that you, you kind of look at things from, from an expectation. We expect that of our kids, we, we encourage them, we expect them to fail, we expect them to learn from their failures, and, so don't be surprised because of their age, because they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna do it. And you have to have that expectation, so, so as you see them come through the system and you see them do things that we never did in school, don't be surprised, don't be shocked, and encourage them and expect it out of them, because, because they're, they're hard on themselves, and they push themselves, and you've, you heard them tonight, they challenge themselves. And that's what we're doing. That's what's probably the most innovative of all. They've asked each state to write something, and it could be anything you want, like, what are you, what are you doing? And, you know, and as we started talking, I started talking with the editor, we started talking about some ideas, we talked about the academies and all that, but, but it really boils down to expectations. If I think back to the originating conversations we had about the academies, I think those of you who are here, you could probably tell me I was crazy, right? Right, and, but I had faith in our kids, and I knew they could do it, and we had teachers who couldn't think at the time, who would, who would disagree with that now, but we expected out of our kids, and we know they can do it. Not, not everybody, we take it one kid at a time, and that's, was probably the secret to our success, if you will. Everyone is different. And so if that was the key to our innovative success, I guess you can say, I think that would be it, the expectations that we have for education of our kids. So if you could just help me out with that, I'd appreciate it.
Every really does mean every.
The, to go along with Dr. Collins, he used to be the stu, the teachers challenged the students. Now the students have reversed the role, and now they're challenging the teachers.
Twenty-five brains in the room, doesn't it?
Yep, a brain is nothing more than a sponge.
That's right.
Oops, sorry. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn? Okay. Ah, yes, we caught her off guard.
Don't forget your pies and your cookies.
I, I forgot, yes, thank you. And we are adjourned at eight twelve P. M.